We've been talking about this for three years now, and I understand that there's a revolving account that Gus uses to fix things, but one walk-in cooler or one steam oven or something like that can wipe that entire thing out. I briefly talked to him last week just to have a, just to kind of get an overview, and he doesn't seem overly concerned, but I'll throw this at Mrs. DeBoer. One thing that I'm used to with this kind of equipment is kind of like a status that we're all able to look at, you know, that's updated daily. We called it eight o'clock reports, it was kind of nice, so it'd be like ovens, high school, two of four, you know, steam tables, middle school, one of six. You know, I know he mentioned that he has from the bad ovens to fix the good ovens, and if one thing goes down, then they're unable to support the kids. So I mean, this is the kind of visibility I think we need in order to make these kind of decisions.
So maybe it's part of his monthly report?
Exactly.
We could have inventory of equipment and then working, not working.
I thought at one point we would [muffled] an assessment of the status of the kitchen equipment?
I think I've been talking about that.
Yeah, we did get one.
We did.
But it's not a monthly report, you know?
No, it's not a monthly one, but...
And it'd be nice to have a priority too, like his priority to fix for the month or the year or the quarter or whatever.
It would be helpful, it sounds like, to have that on a more frequent basis. All right, other questions, comments? Jeff, at this point?
No, sir, thank you. I again appreciate people taking their time out to have this discussion, that we can actually have a public discussion about it. Huge crowd that wants to discuss the changes to the budget, but at least we gave them the opportunity to do so. Me, it's, you know, about me, I've talked about this before, I'm an information guy, I need information to make a good decision. Not always, but it's nice to have it when you have the opportunity. And me personally, I like to have more information about the technology, I like to have more information about the food service. I don't know what district-wide initiatives are either, but I know that I do, like I said, I owe Paul the courtesy of letting him present us with a budget that he wants, so, and we can take it from there. I'm interested to know what you and George think about the recommendations, you know?
George?
Sorry.
Your turn.
I think it goes, what is going to be the school committee's philosophy is, I have a feeling this 1.4% increase, the level increase for all intents and purposes, this is not going to be a one-year deal, this is going to be continuing, or at least a much reduced status from what we've been used to, the 2.1% to the 2.3% that we needed. And, you know, this year is not, from my looking at the budget, there are some cuts that are going to have to be made, we have to discuss along that line, but what is the philosophy of the school committee going to be going forward? Because if this continues, we cannot continue like this. And we have two areas to look at, we have labor and we have all the other stuff. And my, one of the things we're attempting to do with the school choice is to encourage people to come into the schools and mash fees, and I think one of the biggest selling points is that we're not charging fees for anything. And we're out there competing with other districts, we're not charging. So, philosophy one, do we want to eliminate that and start charging? Or do we want to look at other areas? And about the only other areas that we have are salaries, personnel. And one of the big things coming up is, I understand there's a negotiation going on with the teachers as far as upcoming contracts are concerned. And I said this at the last meeting, and I'll say it again, I said, "I am not going to vote for any contract, this doesn't have something in there that says words to the effect, depending upon available funds." We cannot, in my opinion, go on with, I mean, we get a 1.8% cost of living increase, the seniors in this town wind up with a negative increase, what were the increase in Medicare costs? And the actual for the year from the Department of Labor is 0.3%, so, and we're giving 1.8%. We cannot continue to do stuff like that. We have to start drawing the line somewhere. And the area that I think needs to have the biggest look at is in the area of salaries. And how are we going to start reining in the costs? I mean, with the step increase and stuff like that, we've got a built-in roughly 2% each year, just in the step increases. And if we're going to be limited to, I'm rounding here, but in that ballpark, if we're going to be limited to a level budget, where's it going to come out of? We just can't continue to operate the same way we're operating. That said, I agree with everybody else, we need more additional information. And I think it becomes a philosophy of the school committee, are we going to cut this or are we going to look at labor? And how does the school committee want to go forward? As I do believe that this is not a one-year instance, we're going to have level increase. I see in the newspaper, I've been out of town for a few days, and I see that the, as a Keith Tech, that's Framingham, sorry, wrong town. Cape Tech is up to 18 million for the town share. That's going to affect the taxpayers?
Yes, over 30 years, yes.
Over 30 years. So my feeling on this is that we should come to some sort of a general agreement on the committee as to how we want to approach future years, and then work backwards and do that this year.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
My concern too, moving forward, is that we keep track of, so this year, we're trying to maintain a level service budget with a level funded budget. And so the items we're potentially moving to school choice need to always be part of any presentation on what we are truly spending. And moving forward, if we were to have a 0.1%, it truly should be built on that budget plus what we had to move to choice, because if we don't keep track of that, that will be, you know, a huge problem in terms of whether we have choice or not. But we want to always present what it truly does cost to provide the services, so I don't want to lose whatever we move to choice when we account for funds.
I agree.
Other comments?
I think I've said enough right now, Mr. Chairman.
Just giving your opportunity.
I didn't move to adjourn.
You can come back later in a second, okay? All right, so, couple points. One, I do agree with George that as a committee, we need to develop what is our philosophy in regard to fees, because we are, I believe, the only school that's not charging any sort of user fees, any sort of bus fees. And do we want to continue to do that? Now, I'm concerned in regard to utilizing school choice funds, because I look at those as being variable funds, and yet we're basically using them to supplement fixed costs. And I know George, being an accountant, knows that you don't do that. That's just bad practice and setting yourself up for
Catastrophe.
Catastrophe or worse down the road, because you're counting on something that may not occur. And the problem is, we have to make choices at basically 18 months in advance of when we're actually expending the funds. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about if we are truly going to be in a level service, or, I'm sorry, a level funded budget going forward, that 80.5% of our expected costs for FY18 relate to salaries. And that, in the prospective budget, is a 1.3% increase from what is currently budgeted for FY17.
Say that again, I didn't quite follow that. Level funded budget, but...
So, our level funded budget
Yeah.
for salaries, and what has been presented to us, I believe, went up
Sorry.
1.3%.
Because we're very limited in what we can reduce and...
Because to George's point, there are certain contractual obligations that the school is obligated to pay, and the only way to, there's only two ways to reduce those obligations. One is through negotiations with the respective unions, which 98% of the people fall under in that area. Or, number two, a reduction in expenses through either attrition and, you know, replacing, as we've done in lots of cases, replacing a higher-priced individual with a lower-cost And being able to absorb some of the savings from that. The other option is truly looking at what it is we provide in our classrooms and in our educational services, and making tough decisions in regard to what is essential programs and what are not essential programs, and making, you know, serious choices in regard to what we can afford to do versus what we've been able to do in the past. And I don't like that choice at all, but I have a feeling that it's coming sooner versus later to this committee, and I think we may forestall it for a year, but I don't see us forestalling it very long beyond that. And then, you know, and that's looking at classroom programs. Similarly, I think we would have to make a full assessment of all of our extracurricular activities that we currently fund through the district, and make similar sort of tough decisions in regard to what programs we're going to be able to afford and what programs we're not going to be able to afford. And I'm, you know, my understanding is we have some programs that are very expensive with very small populations of students that are currently utilizing those programs. You know, I hate to have to discontinue something, but I, you know, if it comes down to making a choice between offering a in-class program versus an extracurricular activity, I think, for me, it's a relatively easy decision to make. And I don't like that. You know, I think we've been fortunate to be able to offer a wide range of activities for our students, and, you know, as I mentioned, some are very popular and involve a lot of individuals, others are less popular, but still have the same value to the individuals that participate. But, as with any household budget, when it comes down to it, I think this committee, unfortunately, will have to make some tough choices and decide what we can afford to keep and what we can't afford to keep going forward. And, you know, when I've looked through what the business manager had presented to us, I'm not sure I fully understand all of the reductions that he has entailed, and I guess I would need more understanding of how he got to some of those numbers. And also, you know, I'm re-questioning then some of the increases that we have currently outlined in the budget, such as, you know, our regular day transportation having gone up, but sped going down, not a lot, but a little, to someone else's point earlier. Similarly, you know, and I was just talking about extracurricular activities, you know, I do understand that, or at least I thought I understood, that we had to move our coaching salaries into contractual personnel. Yet, when I have looked through the budget here, again, I don't see that, yet I see an overall reduction in expenses, so I'm trying to just equate...
Just keep that one went down and then this one went up.
Yeah, so maybe that's where it is.
Okay.
In those two numbers, because I had highlighted both, so. But even there, then, you know, the expenses went down by 20% and the salaries went up by 42%. So, if it's just moving from one line item to another line item, I can understand that. But where did the additional 20% come from? You know?
I'm sure Paul knows that.
Yeah, and obviously, these are questions that we need to have Paul respond to, but, you know, these are my concerns. You know, similarly, you know, we run, I believe, a late bus for activities that, and I don't know what that costs us, but nothing is free, do we need to do that? You know, and so, I think if we're going to be in this situation on an ongoing basis, we clearly need to be looking at that level of detail. The other point that I would also make to the committee is my sense at this point in the contract negotiations, I'm not sure that we will have finalized our contracts prior to the county town meeting cutoff, which I believe is 30 days prior to the town meeting, right?
Yes. It has to be published 30 days in advance, so.
Right. So, that being the case, we may be in a similar situation as to the town manager in regard to his union contracts, which he does not expect to have finalized, that we may be in a situation where we would potentially need to go to town meeting in October, once we know what the final numbers are for this.
Actually, I think that's an excellent idea. I think it's time to let the voters decide, you know, on the increases that we're giving, they do for the police and they do for the fire, they ratify those contracts, and I think also, the voters should be given the opportunity to ratify the increases in salaries for teachers.
Well, but the...
They will have to, in this case, if we're not negotiated by much, whatever it is, April, whatever it is, sorry.
They'd have to ratify the increase in the budget.
They would have to
I'm sorry, approve the increase.
Approve moving free cash to pay for these budgeted items, and basically increase our omnibus budget by whatever that number potentially could be.
Police and fire have done that.
What happens if they say no?
So, but Mrs. DeBoer...
From our perspective, and we all love our firemen and policemen, and so do the town, and so, not that our town doesn't love our teachers, but I don't think, because our amount is generally pretty significant, I don't know, I worry that townspeople would be as supportive when it's singled out, like with the police and the fire, and the problem is, when it isn't funded, it's very disruptive to a school year that's already begun, because we would have to lay off teachers and remove them and change home rooms, and so we've tried to avoid that situation once a school year has started. Normally, if the contract's not completed, we continue with the current one until it's worked out, funding-wise is the challenge, but that could be disruptive if it wasn't approved.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to expound on that. You know, when we vote police and fire increases at town meeting, it's a relatively similar number year over year. You know, it's a 1%, it's a 1.5%, it's in that range, but if we were to bring it to a town meeting this year or, you know, next year, whatever it is, that's going to be, it's going to look to be an astronomical number to the voters, because they've never seen something like that separated from this budget. And I think people will be horrified, but they may be horrified only because they don't, you know, haven't seen it day-to-day as we're seeing it.
So, just to be clear, what potentially that would look like would be whatever in excess, if there was in excess, required above and beyond what we have in the level-funded budget? So, there is a, there are...
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a vote for $16 million, it would be a vote for whatever the increase is over the
Dollar amount.
Budget.
Right. But, to Scott's point, the voters are not used to seeing those sort of increases, which are transparent to them as part of the omnibus budget, but are very clear to individuals on the committee. You know? And to the superintendent's point, if we don't have funding, you're talking major disruption to the schools, because we would have to reduce the budget, and it is a seniority-based layoff program that would be in place. So, it's not the school that really controls, it's per the contract, so, you know, you could have people moving all around from where they are to fill based upon seniority. Not to horrify you.
Well, I was thinking that maybe we could have, you know, I can't believe I'm asking this, but maybe we could have Paul, I know there's only two weeks until the next meeting, and one of them is a vacation week, however, maybe have Paul run a draft fee schedule on transportation and athletics and whatever else the superintendent might think is appropriate, just so we can look at. You know, I've always been an advocate of not having fees, but I want to see what the dollar amount could be. I mean, I don't believe it's going to be a million dollars, I don't believe it's going to be three-quarters of a million dollars that could be generated, but I'd like to see the number, or some kind of skeleton diagram of what we might look at. And the other one, I just wanted to mention, you know, we're one of the few districts that, that I know of, at least in Eastern Mass, that have no responsibility for grounds and maintenance, and so, we're awful lucky to not have, except for the $150,000 we had to allay to the town for this survey of, the engineering surveys.
Should we also give the final...
631.
Thank you. And so, you know, I don't know if we could, but we've been very lucky with the terms, we don't have to actually do a lot of that, you know, we've done about half a percent of what other schools would actually do, and so we've been lucky in that regard, and I think we can, you know, we do sound a little dour, but I think we can trudge through this and make everyone as happy as we possibly can.
So we should probably look then at the surrounding towns and what the fee schedule is that they use, and see if we were to mimic their fee structure, what that would mean. Keep in mind that, you know, just based on a rough, what, 30% population that has free and reduced, they would also get a reduced fee for hardship wages.
Hardship wages. Yeah, me personally, after looking through the budget, and I'm very excited, I'll talk to Paul and I will make a point, but there's a lot of, there's many, many things in this budget that I want to ask him about, and many, many, what I consider to be inflated areas. And I think that we've been, I say we as a town, have been very lucky in the amount of money we're able to put into a budget, and the padding we're able to put so that people don't have to worry about making the hard decisions at the end of the school year, and by, what I mean by that is that, you know, Mrs. Jones, no particular Jones included, can go to a conference or get tuition reimbursement, you know, I don't believe, you know, Mrs. DeBoer can tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we regularly have to say no to anybody about really anything. And, you know, I wonder if we're moving into that direction now, where we have to say no more often, and when $1,500 is the professional development budget, that's the professional development budget, you don't move $1,500 more dollars from sped transportation to fill that budget. And I would be much rather talk about that and move that around than developing an entirely new program that is an alternative tax to the townspeople and would create a huge administrative extra burden for the main office, to figure out how we're going to do this, who's going to collect the funds, who's going to do it, who's going to track it, how are you going to do it? Are they going to wear badges, are they going to have cards, how are you going to know they paid? I mean, oh my goodness, you can talk to Barnstable, and I talked to someone at gymnastics about, one of the parents about the Barnstable busing things, and it's, it's a complete nightmare for the students, and I can't even imagine the nightmare it is for the main office. And, you know, let's say you have 900 families and you charge them 200 bucks a year, you know, there you go, you got $180,000. What does that really do?
Jeff makes a great point, and, you know, some of the professional development, I don't know how much of it is currently as we speak, but some of the professional development is taken when you travel, you know, the educators will travel, and that does not only include the registration fee, includes reimbursement for lodging and any, not incidentals, but any travel on the other end, you know, bus or taxi, whatever it is. You know, so we can scale back in a lot of ways, and not that we don't want professional development, but we can try and have more professional development in, you know, that comes to the district and hits everybody at once. There was something else that Jeff pointed on that was pretty good, well, it's all good, Jeff, but it's, there is a lot of, that's what it was, you know, in the last several years, I remember one year we were turned nearly $500,000 in June to the town because we had extra funds, and some years we'll buy something very expensive for the technology department at the high school, or, you know, this clear-touch item here, I mean, I have no idea what that thing costs, but, you know, I don't want to buy any more of those, you know, at this time. And so at the end of the year, what happens is someone says, "There's this goodie we've always wanted, we've been waiting on it for a year and a half, two years, and it's gleaming and wonderful and new, and everyone wants it, let's go get it." So, some of that stuff, Paul Maple will say, "You know what, you know, we may not have as big of a challenge as you think."
No DVD drive.
I think a lot of the professional development now is done, pretty much, it's not as much as when I first came on here, it's a lot of it's done in-house now.
We have benefited greatly from our two years We have benefited greatly from our two years with the Tower Foundation and the PD that has come into the district. There are certain things, certain, you know, national conferences, whether it's a technology or a math, that sometimes we'll send a teacher or two, which is pretty beneficial, but we can definitely, I think, find ways to cut back on.
I'm not trying to poke a wound at professional development. That was just one example of a lot of things we can look at in the budget.
Well, I think your point is, there's lots of little things that may add up to
Right.
bigger things, particularly, you know, if, if our goal is to, you know, retain staff and retain the programs that we have, you know, if that's what we feel that is most important, then, you know, we have to work around everything else and be able to accomplish that goal. You know, I don't, I don't think anyone at this table, or in the town, wants to see the Mashpee Public Schools go backwards. You know, we've worked very hard over the last couple of years to improve our rating, to get to a Level Two again, and we wanna continue to be a Level Two school.
Level One.
Wow, you wanna be a Level One.
That's the goal.
That is the goal.
Or one and a half.
But, Scott, I would point out, maybe that's not achievable.
I, yeah, it's very difficult, based on a lot of different factors. You're right.
But, this could be a contributing factor.
I'm not sure that falls in the definition of level service.
Moving to a Level One?
Yeah.
Probably not.
We're still gonna try though.
We should always be striving to try. You know, and I think we can get there. I think what this committee needs is more information than to understand, you know, at a more detailed level, the ramifications of, you know, this choice versus that choice. And as people have pointed out, it's not only a choice for this year, but it's also a choice looking forward to the following year, and the year after that, you know, and what are we gonna support, and what's most important to us?
This year is not bad. It's not good, but it's certainly not bad. It's not dire, is probably a better way of putting it. If we're in the same position in future years, it's gonna have a lot of changes.
No, you need one year where the cost of living goes up three and a half percent, and we're gonna be in deep trouble.
Well, part of the, you know, I wish there were mechanisms that other, for example, a regional district can roll over funds from previous year, and, you know, for example, we've turned money in to the town. For example, the Cape Cod Collaborative, they can roll over money, or the tech schools, they can roll over money to the next year, but we're not allowed to do that, but when we return it, we thought we were doing it in good faith, you know? And there's no way they can hold it for us and put it back, you know, into us the next year. Maybe they essentially do, if you think about it. But, you know, George makes a good point that, you know, I think we're fine this year, and I think we will have some, we could have some surplus at the end of the year, but we won't be able to apply it to the following year.
Sir, I don't think the surplus will be anywhere near what we've experienced.
Yes.
Well, if we're doing our, if we're doing our right.
If we're doing it right.
Right.
And I understand that Paul's looking into a crystal ball every time he does the budget, you know, and especially, especially with the negotiations going on.
Yeah, to me, to me, that is probably the biggest open-ended question. You know, how do you get a level-funded budget to work if 80% of your costs are going to go up? By at least, to Georgia's 0.2%?
Something has to do with that.
Right. And, you know, are there sufficient expenses that can be reduced? In order to offset that change?
When 80% of your budget, or 81, whatever it is, is labor.
80.5.
80.5 is labor. It's pretty hard to, there's not much left in the expense area, in my opinion, that you can really chop much.
Yeah, you could, you could say that we need to increase the service, I mean, the supply line.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure there are teachers out there taking out of their pockets for this, you know, small incidentals, you know, $20 and $30 and $40 here and there, because they don't wanna, they don't wanna ask, you know?
Well, I know, it's been mentioned to me in particular during the, the spring, and particularly in the springtime, when the buildings get hot, that, you know, teachers have, out of their own pocket, purchased fans in order to, you know, lower the temperature from 85 to 83 degrees in their classrooms. You know, I, I don't think that's right, that they should have to do that. But we're getting to, you know, that expense item is exactly what we're having to focus on.
Well, I'm sure they're wearing coats this time of year as well, some of them, you know? I wear thermals, thermals all the time. I don't know if that would help, you know, you know?
Can I say one more thing too?
Go ahead.
You know, in respect to expenses, another thing that Mashpee students are not given is a supply list in the summer. That can be quite lengthy, most every other district does do that. We pretty much provide everything that they need. I think the only thing they generally contribute to a classroom is hand sanitizer and tissues if they want to. But we don't give along extensive supply lists, which many other districts do.
And do the other districts around here do a book rental fee also?
A book rental fee?
Or?
Charging for lost books?
Textbook fee?
No, I don't think they do a textbook fee.
Okay.
If you lose it, you probably get a charge.
I, yeah.
Yeah.
Just going back a few years when I was in high school.
Okay.
That we had, a few.
I have a few more, but.
As I recall, we had a textbook fee, but now that everything's, or more things are electronic, we probably have less textbooks. But, you know, maybe it comes down to, you know, I hate, I would hate that we have to start charging for some of our technology. You know, it's just a vicious circle, for what endgame, I'm not sure.
Some hard decisions are gonna have to be made if it's only a level-funded one.
All right.
On that happy note.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments? I know we've tried to make a list of some of these, that people have questions to make sure that they get to Paul, but I would ask that each of you reach out to him individually with your questions, so that they are appropriately responded to, and then brought forth to the meeting in March, for all of the members to be updated on.
We will have to vote on this.
We'll, we'll have to.
I think we are scheduled at the 16th, at the, for the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I mean, but we would be looking at, potentially voting on a revise, revision at the first March meeting.
At the first March meeting?
Okay. If we're.
If we're.
Able to.
Able to.
March 16th, Finance Committee.
Yeah, thank you.
Thursday night.
Do we have another meeting prior to that, though?
It's tomorrow night.
No.
No, no. Yeah, we have, we have a school committee on the 15th.
15th, so we have two more potential meetings. Prior to that.
From the first, yep.
With a final, my guess is, we would have to have a final number no later than the end of March.
No later.
Because the selectmen will have to.
Selectmen have to vote on it too, so.
Right. And the FinCom has to, well, I guess they, they can vote on it at town floor, but the selectmen will at least want to vote, so. Potentially two more meetings, but let's, let's see if we can get a point where we can address it at the first meeting in March. All right, on that happy note, the next item of business is a follow-up on the FY18 school choice.
So, you have a memo in your packet, and all the, you already voted on the seats for FY18. I just wanted to point out that school choice will remain open for the balance of the school year, 1718, until all seats are filled. We just wanna be clear on that. We are allowed to do that, and I think it allows, sometimes when a student who was a Mashpee student would maybe not have to come before and ask for a tuition waiver if we had a school choice seat to move them into, but it's only whatever's left after the two lotteries, if there happens to be a seat.
So, how many, so this is proposing 39 seats, right?
Mm-hmm.
How many existing seats do we have then that would carry over to FY18?
Current 1617 school choice is 70? No, yeah, 70. But three of them are seniors, so in theory, it'd be 67.
67.
Mm-hmm.
So, 67 and 39. If all seats are filled?
106.
106?
67 and 39.
Okay.
116, 106, yep.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So, my only concern about this is that, I was, I mentioned before the last meeting, I thought there was something funky that I remembered in my head, or something, and it's actually the school, school committee policy that specifically has dates in it.
It has the, I have, it has the dates of the, I'm at this one, this one.
It's JFBB.
Yes. So, we have to, by May 1st of every year, we have to determine the number of spaces available, which you did, and by June 1st of every year, consideration has to be given whether you're gonna withdraw, withdraw from the school choice program. Resident students are given priority placement in any classes, and then.
You have a paragraph that says there will be two drawings for the purpose, first, the last week of the current school year, but no later than July 1st, the second will be conducted during the week immediately preceding the opening of the next school year?
Right, that's that next one, but it doesn't say, it says when the, so those are the two periods, we draw the names. If, if it was, if you still had seats open, you can leave them open for the rest of the year, it doesn't go against that.
I got it. I was just making sure we didn't have to suspend the policy.
No, we looked at that, right.
All right, awesome.
Any other questions on the school choice then for FY18?
I do have, just a comment. So, May 1st is a deadline to nail down seat amount.
Right, you're ahead of the game.
So, you could, the superintendent, I would hope that this board, I believe the board already gives latitude towards the superintendent to increase that number or decrease that number, and if you're able to find ability to make more seats, or make more seats available, that'd be wonderful. So, I don't know if your thought process is to keep that number open in your mind, or if that's rock solid in 39?
Well, it was based on each principal making the decisions for their school. I can go back and revisit that, but you do run the danger of, you know, there tends to be, I know last year at Quash, there were 25 new enrollments in the summer. You just, there's that unknown factor, and you don't really wanna end up with big class sizes, but it's a possibility to explore a little further.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, unicorns and rainbows here, that, you know, what if, I don't know, 20 people decide to move out in May, you know, or April, and then, you know, then some seats pop up. You never know. I'm sure you'll keep tabs on it.
So, so given this number, this will retain a target total enrollment of, of what, 1650?
That's a different form. I didn't know that we looked at it in terms of, you know, it's better to have that because of the, some of the changes that happen. Yeah, we're trying, yes, so, we did not build choice numbers in, when we projected forward, we took just what was there, so in that sense, 39 aren't there, but there's probably 30 that are gonna leave, for whatever reason, you know?
But the 67 are in.
67 are in here.
Are in those numbers, right?
And the majority of our choice students are known, you know, I've said this before, they're not strangers to Mashpee. When I look down the list, I know almost every one of those names, so.
That kinda shows you that they don't come here because of the no-fee, no-fee policy.
Right. They just, they, they wanna stay here once their family relocates.
No one's hearing about the no-fees, let's move to Mashpee, right?
And this also doesn't look at the flip side of it, which is, the students that are choicing out to other schools.
Yeah, and that, you know, we once had the Finance Committee ask us to, this was years ago, ask us to come up with reasons, and could we do, you know, exit interviews, but there's so many factors in that, and it's not, you know, someone on the Finance Committee, this was years ago, you know, George didn't say this at the time, but it was other people, that maybe we weren't providing a good enough services, but, you know, for example, Barnstable has volleyball, you know, some students wanna play volleyball, and so they go to Barnstable. Some students have friends in Balmwood, they wanna join their friends.
You know, there's also families that have three children, and one kid, one child is just not having a good time. Something's not working out, and it's not just the one child that moves out, that goes somewhere else in the district, it's all three.
Right.
And sometimes there are, you know, family members who work in the other town, and it's easier for them to have their children work in that town, and go to the school in that town, and they're allowed to do that, so.
Okay, cool. Next item is the FY18 calendar. You now have choice.
I actually have, well, yeah, do you have these? Oh, you have yours in color.
I do.
Yeah, just kidding.
I have this.
This also has the survey.
Calendar.
Oh, you have the survey. Okay.
Oh, color.
Oh, hey.
All right. So, now we have three choices.
We also met with our, our Compass team this afternoon, which is a mixed group of educators from all the different schools, and we didn't come up with other options, but there are other variations we could easily come up with, so. So, you have the three, option A and B, and option A and B are similar in that students would come back before Labor Day. And then option C is more of our traditional calendar, that has students starting after Labor Day. And the difference between A and B basically had the two days, we come back for two days, so we gain the two days before Labor Day, but giving a whole week off at Thanksgiving put us at an end date of June 18th with Draft A. Draft B had the two days before Labor Day for students, kept Thanksgiving the way it normally is, and had the students ending on the 14th of June. And Draft C is traditional, which also ends on the 18th of June. And I did talk to Compass today about thinking, in the perfect world where the Quashnet Window Roof Project will be starting in 18, the idea of giving as much time in the month of June would be very beneficial for getting everything done by that following September, even though they're gonna be able to work, you know, hopefully at night, and they can do some early work on the vacations, but that's a thought. But you'll see from the, so then you also have the survey, which was just a survey to parents, and I believe we had 288, actually, we had 290 responses, but they didn't all answer the questions, so, 288. two-hundred-and-eighty-eight. Draft C is the, at forty-eight percent, roughly forty-nine percent of respondents, or a hundred-and-forty-one people prefer it to stay in the traditional way. And then draft B, which had them coming back before school vacation, keeping Thanksgiving the same and ending, was second with a thirty-seven percent favorability at a hundred-and-six respondents. The next part of the survey allowed for sharing thoughts, so you have two pages of thoughts, and then the last page just shows the, where the children of the respondents will be next year, grade level-wise. So there's a lot of interesting reading in the thoughts, and so it's, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, was it two-eighty-eight respondents?
Yes.
And how many recipients, or potential recipients?
I had you print that, didn't you print out that?
It looks like about twelve percent, right? Ten, twelve percent respondents?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's not the one I had you check. So I, we can, the link went out through School Messenger, so a report of who all received the link, I can have Mrs. Loyco look at that, and you can at least gather from that families, because it'll only, usually only goes to one, unless they have multiple numbers, then you potentially could have two emails on that.
I try.
Did you get it? Oh.
Well, I wanted to, my wife felt it out, and I wanted to fill it out too, because we wanted to stack the deck there, but...
And it didn't let you?
No, we tried on the other thing too, but I always try that. So anyway, I assume that every pre-K through twelve, each household got a questionnaire?
Yes. What we can print out is there are a few, which we've tried to correct in the past, where families have a blocked, they block the email, or they're, it's usually a certain carrier, but might end up in a spam box. But it was just to get a feel for me of, of how the parents feel, and, you know, just some of the, you'll read the thoughts. They do treasure Labor Day weekend as a time for having the beach to themselves. They, some like the Thanksgiving break being longer, some definitely do not. They might like a longer Christmas break, and they didn't really reference a lot in June. I feel like June is an opportunity to have the beach to yourself as well, it's hot then, but the tourists don't usually arrive yet. But there's a lot of feedback on everything in there. Some people responded to the early start time, which was not part of the survey, but their thoughts are here.
So, have you talked about, I know you talked about Compass a minute ago, but had you talked about, I think this might be difficult to do based on, I think educators and students need rest, but we were talking in passing the other day, you and I, superintendent, about eliminating maybe April or something like that.
Well, we, we have talked about creating one March vacation, which is a slightly different plan than you might say, just get rid of April. But both February and April vacations have a Monday holiday, so you only gain, if you took a five-days in March versus the eight actual school days, you only, it's a gain of three days, which every day does matter, but I did bring that up today with Compass, and they recalled, and I don't have a vivid memory of this, but there was a year we did it. It was not overwhelmingly, it wasn't a great experience for many who did it. And I get that the vacation weeks are more expensive for travel. One suggestion at Compass today was to keep the February vacation, but change the week, so we're not in sync with the rest of Massachusetts. We could be in sync with New Hampshire, which is always the week after ours, to save a little money there, but then you get, it gets glitchy with working teachers who have kids in other districts, and it's just, I know, there's layers to it, so.
All February is expensive.
They got it, they got it.
And then you don't want to tie in with college spring break.
Exactly, yes. That's the problem with March, I agree.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's, it's not good. So, although you're not voting on it tonight, you can just sort of ponder, we can come up with other, you know, other solutions. I, I think the, the reason, just to clarify too, the three PD days in August, where normally we have two, is really designed for us to have a full day of Alice training, which we really need, and if we didn't do it then, we'd be taking another, we'd have to do it early September, would be my preference, which then gives, you know, another day off from school, which is not so good.
I still have an issue with the first week of October.
So the, right, so the, you know that the October sixth is the all-Cape day. We don't, we don't pick that day, the half-day?
I'm just talking about people trying to get time off. I mean, people trying to get babysitting for a full day on Friday and a half-day on Monday is a pain in the butt, you know?
Yeah.
It's, a day and a half a week is, it seems like an excessive amount of PD on a four-day, on a three-day weekend. But I understand it's the all-Cape, which is terrible planning, by the way, for whoever the person is who determines that's the all-Cape.
Well, we try, the suggestion was to leave it, to have it on November seventh, because that's when it was this year on Election Day, but it's not a big election day, and Barnstable had already booked on October sixth as a PD, and we went around and around a couple of times with that, and for this year, it ended on the sixth. And we don't have to have October second off that day, since we have the full day, and not everyone, I prefer to keep our teachers in-house, so the only ones that really do the Cape, all-Cape day are sometimes the counselors or school psychologists, and then art teachers, music teachers, they tend to have regionalized PD that's pretty effective for them, but the rest of the teachers, we try to keep in. So we could get rid of the Monday half-day on the second.
I think that makes sense.
In which draft, are we, are we going to write notes on draft C?
It's all of them.
I know, but I'm going to write on draft C.
By the way, did you get?
All right, so we could eliminate that.
Sorry. Did you count from the union on the pre-Labor Day?
The union, we would have, the pre-Labor Day for students, we would have to have an agreement with them based on current wording in the contract, which I have communicated to them and received back the wording of the contract, which I am well aware of, so we would.
I just don't know if we're spinning our wheels doing draft A and B, if they're not going to support it, you know, so.
I think we are, yeah. I think we would be.
It was made a suggestion to at Compass, which we're going to follow up on, is connecting with other districts that might have similar demographics but outperform us academically, and see where they, I mean, there's a lot of variables in that, but if they consistently start before Labor Day, you know, the idea is everyone is very enthusiastic at the end of August, the kids are rested, they're ready to come back, you can get more learning, you want more learning in advance of whatever MCAS 2.0 or whatever comes down the pike.
Well, I think, I think the other thing, you know, presuming that we're going to be moving forward with the window project, that, you know, starting sooner, having a couple of extra days is a good faith attempt by the school to at least save a little bit, because, you know, paying to have the workers work at night, et cetera, is much more expensive than having it done during the day.
That's true, and also DBW has regular maintenance that they have to start on, at the same time the windows are going on, and the beaches are open on the weekend.
Well, when the window project gets going, I, I'm trying to imagine how that's going to be for a teacher who packs up their room, where normally it gets sort of stacked and stored. It cannot go over near the windows, is it a massive into the school gymnasium, because they still need to do the room itself? Where is all, all of that stuff going to go for when they have to get the rooms?
I, I'd be surprised if they could provide any security in the areas that they're working on as well. I mean, maybe plastic sheeting at the most, so they'd probably expect, just for liability purposes, for the in-room to be almost completely empty.
Oh, I would think so, because if not...
They're not going to take liability for anything in that room.
If not, it's not a quiet endeavor. You know, they're chiseling out these frames.
I was just talking about even storing anything in there.
Yeah, like if it's summertime, yeah, they're not in there. And Compass also asked about having December twenty-second off, and, mm-hmm, and I did point out that we were in school on December twenty-third this year, and we all survived. And I know that Barnstable, though, is giving December twenty-second off in their next year's calendar.
Well, it goes, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But other towns were not leaning in that direction.
Well, it goes back to your point about piling up as many days as we can before MCAS comes out, you know, before we standardize tests.
I saw a sneaky half-day on there.
What?
You always do a sneaky half-day, right? Doesn't count for, doesn't count against you?
No, that counts. Where do you want to put a sneaky half-day?
On the twenty-second.
Oh, that did come up today, actually, yes. And I asked them, I said, is that for students with PD in the afternoon, is that for everybody?
Right, they don't want PD, right.
Right, no, no PD, no.
No, no PD, no, they don't want the PD, and I was like, eh. I said that it was an opportunity for those who still needed to get things done at home to get it done without a child being there to interfere.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right, so this will come back, hopefully we will be able to vote on this on the, at the next meeting. And the interesting thing from the survey is, half of the people, over half of the people would be in favor of starting before Labor Day, based on the survey.
Oh, that's a good perspective, yes, adding the A and B together.
I mean, the difference is just the whole Thanksgiving thing.
Right.
I'm disgusted with the response, it just bums me out.
Yeah.
So, well, I'll be able to report back in terms of...
I mean, you can look at, you can look at all individuals by grade, it's like ten percent averages out, ten or eleven percent, you know? Oh, okay. Yeah, I understand, yeah.
But once you vote it and you've taken away, or given, then...
Ten percent actually is a fairly good return.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is, but I mean, in this, in this time that we're trying to be very open and we have budget problems, and we're trying to make more outreach to the, to the folks that, you know, make the comment they don't know.
I hear what you're coming from, yes.
If there's any, any ideas from out in the ether, or here, about how we can do a better...
Did you answer the survey?
I answered the survey, and actually, I was just saying, the only thing is, for me, I could only answer the survey once, so it probably only took into effect that, I only had one kid when I actually have two, so.
Oh, and she has twins, so she couldn't click, what grade are they in?
There is ten, there's eleven.
So she couldn't click ten twice.
But I know there's a couple of other families that have twins or twins, so, I mean, they're looking at that, so I'm pretty much as well. And then, my only other thing I talked about with the calendar over here is, is there a reason in Massachusetts, and that, I'm not from Massachusetts originally, that the kids are in school on the Kinky Days, like Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Day, why aren't they in school those days?
It's just federal, state holidays.
State holiday.
Yeah, but, so it's like a Massachusetts thing then?
Yeah.
It is a Massachusetts thing.
It's bunker hill day.
Usually, my kids have been in school those days before we meet here.
Yeah, and statewide, it's like that, but, you know, in city Boston, it's bunker hill day too, so.
And then, um...
On Patriots' Day, we're not in school, right?
My, and then my other thing is, is the reason that I answered the survey to start after Labor Day is because I feel it's two-days appointments, but if you were to do it like that whole week they were in school, I'd be all for that.
So from a teacher's perspective, though, there is a lot of, of sort of organizational, there's, there are pieces that take place in those first couple of days that to get that, they don't really start, we've always talked about really not starting right into content on those first couple of days, there's, so it could, it would be beneficial, and then be able to hit it hard on, you know, Tuesday after Labor Day in terms of fully up and running for academics, yeah.
Okay. Good discussion. Next item is in regard to the joint meeting with the selectmen on March sixth. I had heard from George, that doesn't work for him, Jeff doesn't work for him, Scott, I'm not sure your availability, and I did not hear anything from Chris, so I'm not even sure if we would have a quorum.
I'm available, but it sounds like we're not. It sounds like, it sounds like we won't have all five of us.
We definitely won't have all five of us.
It'd probably be hard to do all five of us at any time.
Well, I think their problem is they have a, only a two-week window.
After the previous date, because that was good for the previous.
That was a good pun.
Yeah.
The previous one was fine.
Unfortunately, with the previous date, the project manager wasn't able to provide the information in time.
Well, I believe we paid him eighty-one thousand dollars to provide that information in time.
So they, there are three choices of SOF, EFIS, I don't know, not the windows, not the roof, the other part. And so at the meeting on Monday, they needed to give us some warranty information, they have priced everything out, but they weren't, they're the ones that are doing the present, the joint presentation, and I know they have to go before, something has to go up to MSBA, so I thought it had to be done in March.
Well, I watch March fifteenth as the...
I think that twenty, twenty-seven, what was the date, the sixth, I think that's our, I think that's our last cutoff day, I think, because they don't, selectmen don't meet in for another, you know, two weeks.
Well, I think they would, they would have to, but I believe that the following week is one that has to be submitted.
Yeah.
So, so to your point.
I'm just, unfortunately, I can't make it, and I'll watch the meeting and get the information.
It has to be done, it has to be submitted the fifteenth.
Yeah. I, I mean, as I understand it, they're not asking for the school committee to vote on anything?
Yeah, and the finance committee's going to be there too, so there'll be plenty of eyeballs.
So, I guess we will respond, well, we will at least have representation, I'm not sure if we'll have a quorum, I guess it depends on whether Chris is available, but we can respond that, we will make every effort to attend on the sixth. You know, the one thing that the superintendent brought to my attention, which I did not know about, was that it appears that given the cost of the project and the valuation of the building, that, you know, there's another little contingency that we weren't aware of, that I'm sure people will love, but we will have to retrofit the bathrooms to be ADHD.
Well, they say M-A-A-B, but it's, it's handicap assessability, so.
All of them?
All of them, in the building.
Staff and faculty, faculty and student.
I have a handout for you, but, so, once you exceed thirty percent of the assessed value of the building, that triggers this added requirement. So we went over every bathroom, and, you know, most cases, you, they refer to them as fixtures, so you're either losing a sink, a urinal, a stall. In some cases, we're going to try to capture a maintenance closet, and, you know, we looked at everything pretty closely, and, so.
All right. So, that's another four-hundred-plus thousand?
Four-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
All right.
Added to the cost.
Brand-new building.
Well, I mean, the good news is, when you get done with another forty-five years in this baby.
It'll be beautiful.
Yeah.
Some time to do Casey Coons.
Just in time to replace the floor.
And there's some time to do, yeah, exactly, there's some time to go do the high school, it's just not paid for.
It is paid for.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said it's not paid for.
Well, unfortunately, as, you know, as with your home and as with your car, there's maintenance that you have to, to do, and, you know, certain things wear out and have to be replaced, and you can put them off for, in this case, forty years, but ultimately you have to do it if you're going to continue to have schools here in Mashpee. All right. Next item, attendees in regard to the National School Board Association Conference in Colorado. I know it was extended to everybody... I know it was extended to everybody. I know Chris and myself had indicated after the last meeting, um, that we were going to cancel our attendance or our reservations. I'm not sure, uh, I think that leaves Jeff and George in regard to-
No, Scott and I both said at the last meeting that neither one of us was willing to spend eleven thousand dollars on-
Okay, so you're canceling, you're able to cancel yours?
Yep.
Uh, the only reason I put it on there is that Paul thought one of us should go and if somebody does go, I think it should be the one that has the most time left to serve on the school committee, which would be you. But, um, I'm, under the circumstances, I don't think I should be. I'm also gonna, you know, submit my withdrawal.
Okay. I, yeah.
But if somebody goes, based upon Paul's conversation with me, and it was a private one, that if anybody goes, it should be you. It's no longer private, yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 I think until, um, we have resolved our budget issues, um, I personally don't feel that, you know, what I could, what I would gain or what I think the committee would gain warrants the, uh, the cost at this point.
I mean, I think, I mean, how many of this went to Boston? I know you were there, Don.
I think three or four of us went to Boston.
I mean, which is very convenient, of course, but you know, looking back on that, I, I just can't say that I gained eleven thousand dollars with a dollar cut back.
There's no way, yeah.
And Mike, this is exactly a perfect opportunity to comment on what I was saying about the way that we look philosophically at the budget. The school department, the school committee PD budget is thirty-six hundred bucks. We have thirty-six hundred dollars. That's it. It's spent. We're done.
Yeah, I, I will-
I'm done. I'm not talking to the rest of the committee.
No, I know. And, and I will say personally, um, I did get something out of that which was useful, um, for the committee, which I do think, um, has paid us back several times over.
Yes, I believe, yeah.
Um, but, um, you know, it ultimately depends on what it is you're looking for and what are the issues that you're trying to address, as I said. At the time, it was beneficial for what I was looking for, um, and I think it was beneficial, was subsequently beneficial for the committee, but I can't say that that's always the case every time.
And conveniently in Boston.
And it was-
Well, next year it's in Aruba, so I'll be going.
Aruba. I, I think I'll wait for-
It's in the budget.
I, I think I'll wait for the Hawaii one.
There you go.
Alright. Um, alright, so it sounds like every, or-
Paul withdrawn.
Paul was drawing on that.
Make sure Gil follows up.
Thanks.
Alright. So, committee reports?
Other than the windows, did you want to go into any of that, or?
I, do, do you have something to go-
We have basically a price. I don't have much more information than that. Uh, we've already gone over that four hundred and fifty thousand bucks extra for the bathrooms.
Yeah, that's the only thing I know about.
Okay, the, um, the range for the windows and the-
Do you have copies?
Range for the windows and the roof is between eleven million two and eleven million seven. No further breakdown than that, just, um-
So, eleven million for just the roof?
No.
Oh, or all together?
Maybe it's bad enough with just-
Okay. And that includes the four hundred and-
That includes the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
So basically, we're at twelve million and-
No, we're at eleven million seven, eleven million two to eleven million seven. This number includes that.
No, no, I know. I, just doing some, simple math here though. So, twelve million, which they will cover roughly thirty percent.
Thirty, is it thirty-seven?
It's thirty-eight. So our share is, the town's share would be seven point three million.
Seven point three.
Minus the five hundred thousand that we already donated.
Well, total, total cost is seven point three.
Seven point three.
You know, the, um, Cape Tech is going through an MSBA, trying to do a full rebuild, and, you know, we can talk to, maybe Patty can talk to Superintendent Sanborn, um, and he's asked, he's talked to with a state representative in Provincetown about increasing that dollar amount, that percentage. I don't know if we maybe can sign on to that and maybe have, maybe have our state rep and state senator try and work with that too, uh, to join that, to make it more solid, because we're having a range now. And I've heard several different numbers about what that percentage will be, uh, but that couldn't, that couldn't hurt with some money saving.
I can check. I'm not sure if it's different for the accelerated program that we're part of.
Yeah.
Where the thirty-eight was, you know, what we were told, but we can check.
So did they give an estimate of the time, how long the actual construction work is going to take?
They did not, but they did talk about there will be one general contractor and then they, there will be, he will manage all three and there'll be basically a plumbing, bathroom contractor, the roof contractor, and the window contractor. Bathrooms, we have to make them all handicap accessible. And it includes, like, for example, there has to be, um, five percent of the lockers have to be handicap accessible, so basically, one locker per homeroom is my mind, and so they'll be removing two or three lockers to make one that is lower and with shelves, that's what it's supposed to be. So there's a lot of little parts, it's on one of those bigger sheets where it shows all the, um, yeah.
So, so I guess just from an overall timeframe, are we looking, still looking to try to start the spring of two thousand eighteen?
Yes, they said that with everything flowing the way they expected, they would go out to bid in November and be, yeah, good to go in the spring.
And then how long does it take once they actually start ripping things apart?
I don't know if, I think each one would need a projection of how much time they'd, and I don't know, I would assume there's like an order of operations. I don't think you could put the new roof down if they need to do something to the edge of the roof, so, because of the windows.
I, I guess I was just, you know, we were talking about potentially changing the calendar to give a couple extra days in June so that they could work. Yeah. How many, I guess, how many workdays do they need to do this?
I don't know.
No.
We do have a, um, yeah. Well, so we have a follow-up meeting with the Building and Construction Committee of the Town, Mr. McGee and I, on Tuesday, and because they need to play a role in this project as well. And, um, we can follow up, maybe Catherine will have an answer to that question. She, we were waiting to get warranty information, so the choices, the windows have been chosen, the roof, they're going with the rubber, that's the recommended one.
The black rubber?
Black rubber.
Okay.
And, what, go ahead. No, I thought you were gonna say- Okay. So, um, we eliminated the Ephesus being the concrete, the third one down. I didn't bring my original, but, uh, each of the other ones, what we wanted more information on was the life, the warranty, the, the life, um, expectation. So that if we were to go with, the difference between the top two and the bottom one is, what, about five hundred thousand?
Five hundred thousand, roughly.
So if the, the choice of substance or material used was a five hundred thousand dollar difference, if it meant a twenty to thirty-year life, then it might be worth it, but if it's not any extension of the life, then we would probably go with the cheapest one.
Do they wanna replace the courtyard walkway?
It's not handicap accessible. I'd say we paved the whole thing.
I mean, I don't know the rules. I mean, what, what do we, what do we use to elevate the-
If, if, if an able-bodied student is able to go out in that courtyard and access whatever's there, we happen to have the little greenhouse, it has to be fair for everyone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense. It's unfair.
But that's the one courtyard that isn't like the other two, and Catherine knows that we've always wanted to do something in there because it's grass, it doesn't get, it's, it needs to be more like the other two, so they'll do it then.
Black rubber, huh? And what was the reason that they chose that? Was it warranty issues?
It seems to have, it hold up the best. It's, it would, it's, what we have now is similar, but I think it's been-
Right.
Patchworked in piece. I asked about the PVC, the white, thinking it would help keep the buildings cooler, but apparently it's very slippery. I don't know who's up there, but it's very slippery for snow removal and, um, not recommended. I, I suppose we could if we really had a ton-
I mean, whoever?
I don't know.
I don't know that we've ever had.
I mean, I can't, I mean, I, that's a first thing that popped in my head too, is the, uh-
Heat.
The heat.
Well, I, I guess I'm surprised that, given that this is a flat roof, that-
It's, it is the least expensive as well.
That we're not covering, that they're not recommending covering the, um, the rubber membrane with, um, gravel to, uh-
I don't know what that does. Add weight, but-
Well, it adds a little bit of weight, but it protects it from ultraviolet.
Maybe the newest kind is better. I don't know. It's not my area of expertise.
I mean, they have the, they have the tar gravel.
Yeah, so the tar.
Couple million more.
Yeah.
It's all that gravel.
It probably is.
It's not listed here. Where is it? What are you looking for, the courtyard?
Fourteen.
Right here.
Of course, the interesting thing is this, replacing roof and windows is probably more expensive than what the building was originally.
You said, we, do we know about that?
Well, the assessed value at the nine million, I, I don't know that it's ever been increased. I don't know where that number came from. It's not replacing value, so.
Replacement value is a hundred and forty million.
It'd be in that ballpark. One forty-two point three.
Yeah, I, I guess-
There is fourteen.
I, I just, without knowing the workdays, um-
I presume that built into the quotes here is the assumption of much of the work being done in an off-shift, because you would have had to build that in already.
That, that would help, but-
Yeah. They want the job. Have to work in the afternoon.
The PM gets paid the big bucks for it.
These details don't provide enough information to be able to have a settlement. Here's a job that we can volunteer for, removing toilet dis- oral dispensers, gonna charge ten dollars apiece. Let's just get the sledgehammers and I think we can take care of it for less than that.
Hey, will they replace the hand dryer?
You know what?
That was coming. All this, we can't get a hand dryer.
I think so.
I've been asked for a hand dryer for three years.
We got hand dryers, they're just low-power. We, we want the good ones.
Okay.
If I mention I'm going back to framing him, he needs to adjourn.
Tonight?
Yes.
Any other committee reports?
No.
No?
Well, um, my committee report was covered by planning and the construction about the windows and everything, but I don't know if it's, um, a monumental thing, but the collaborative is, um, seeking requests, is actually receiving requests for proposals on transportation from several other districts, I think three of the districts. Uh, so, there may be an increase of, um, bus drivers and staff persons in the collaborative, so I don't know that, you know, I, we currently have a contract, but that may somehow adjust the way we look at our next contract.
What, Scott, do you know when that contract comes up?
I think this is the last year, isn't it? I think this is the last- It was a three-year, and I believe this is the third.
Yeah, Paul, I think Paul mentioned it as well, getting some inroads into getting a fairly good contract.
I know that Bourne just approved going through the collaborative for their buses, which is similar, exactly the kind of program that we have, with the idea that those drivers are gonna jump over to the collaborative. Yeah.
Yeah, so that will mean increased, and this, you know, I probably should, you know, this public about who the other schools are, but I don't need to talk about them, but, you know, that's gonna increase the amount of staff, the dispatchers, everything else, you know, billing, payroll and all that, you know, in the collaborative, so we don't know how that'll affect us, but I'm sure that'll come out in the wash.
Okay. Anything else to be brought forth in front of the committee?
I did have a subject, um, you know, since we're considering school start times, I believe we're still considering that, and we've had commentators bring up various different things, and maybe a pet subject of mine would be the, um, the, uh, physical education deficiency. I believe what I've been told is that, uh, we're not providing the physical education hours that are prescribed by DESI, and I would like to see if we can look into that, if we are, uh, not providing enough. And the reason I say that is because, you know, sleep is good, but, uh, also so is that physical activity, I think that gets the mind going and, um, you know, and also, it also detracts from the other, uh, problems that maybe sleep deprivation, you know, obesity and depression and everything else. You know, and maybe not everyone wants to take physical education. Um, maybe they would like to skip over to fi- music instead of phys ed because, you know, they don't feel like they fit in with that group, but, um, I think physical education is such a huge thing because, um, you know, I can only speak to the kids that I know of my son's age and my son who say, you know, I wish we had more, you know, gym, I wish we had more lunch, but, you know, I don't know how we're gonna give more lunch because they don't eat lunch anyway, they talk. But, um, it would be great to have, see if we can find more physical education and, you know, that's why when I talked about, um, when I talked about, when we first talked about, uh, start times, you know, we don't have any time in the day to add more time, and, you know, are we able to find more time for phys ed, um, within the existing schedule? And I don't know when the, and as a sidebar, I don't know when the last time the curriculum subcommittee met and would they be able to, would that be a subject they can tackle, and if so, would they be willing to? That's all I had.
In terms of the elementary PE requirement, our twenty-five minutes of recess daily count towards that requirement, so I'm pretty sure the last time we checked, we were meeting that requirement on the elementary level, and I think what we offer at the high school is pretty standard with every other high school, so I'm not sure that, you know, we have the deficit that might have been painted before, but we can definitely look into, um, options. I would be in, you know, this would be a whole nother thing, which according to the survey, I need to focus on other things. But lengthening the school day, you know, which usually has a price tag associated with it, but, um, you know, that would be something I would be in favor of. Our visitors from China who just left, they go to school from eight to four.
Wow, and, you know, we could talk about India, what they do, um, but, you know, the high-performing schools is a term we use all the time, but, you know, I think some people are really benefiting at Sturgis for that longer day.
They're not longer than us.
Other than us, everyone's usually there.
They start at eight twenty-five, and we, when we got start times for all of them, the hours are the same. They do have a longer lunch block because they all go out for lunch.
Yes. Thank you.
Alright. Unless there's anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Do you have a motion, have a motion to adjourn?
That's George's job.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, I did.
Second.
Aye.